Whitehall Borough. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we had an executive session regarding litigation matters. And we will stick with them. Residents are assigned to speak during citizens' request. Speakers are allotted three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. Roll call, please, Ms. Works.
Ms. Book.
Here.
Mrs. DeKeel.
Here.
Mrs. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Luchetti.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Zobrowski.
Here.
Mr. V.
Here.
Mayor Noak.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Here.
And Mr. Russ.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. On behalf of our citizens' request. Eric Crane, please stand, state your name and address.
Eric Crane, 301 Southview Drive. Just one thing with, it might be a good idea if the Senate will allow to put a bicycle rack up by the pool. I notice bikes chained along fences and stuff like that. You just put it up like near the entrance booth the next year, if it's available. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, great idea.
It is a good idea. All right.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'll look at you.
It's okay.
Oh, okay. Cheryl Sheffler. Stand, state your name and address, please.
Hi, Cheryl Sheffler, 4807 Baptist Road. The last 22 years. As you all know, I filed a right to know to receive some records that were going to be destroyed, trashed. And for Doverdale, I just want you to know, this is all I can see. One page over a $3 million project. I think it's a disgrace. I want to know what they're trying to bury, that the public is not allowed. And I understand that there are some things that are applying to, applying and Whitehall Borough privileged. I understand that is probably the fact that a needs book was signed looking at improper work with the Baldwin Manor Association. I understand that the gentleman that signed that had a diagnosis of cognitive decline at that time. That the board knows only two and there should have been nine. I understand there was a gentleman's handshake, which Gateway gave an estimate of $10,000 to actually pave the lower pathway. And that never happened when we demanded to know what the money was for. We couldn't take a penny until you put it in writing. And it was so the Baldwin Manor Association did not have any legal action against Whitehall Borough for the damage they were causing from the rolling hills to come in there. All I can say is, I don't expect anything, but I just want everybody to see, this is all I bought from over a $3 million project. I am a private, I'm one of the owners of that private park. That is my business. I'm also a taxpayer at this borough for 22 years. And I know there was a bunch of controversy about these right to knows and being destroyed. I truthfully feel that there's a bunch of skeletons being buried here. And I will tell everybody this story. And I'm not proud of Whitehall Borough for this action. Thank you. Great time.
Ms. Sheffler, to be clear, you're talking about two different projects. The right to know you filed was for the 2014 Doverdale project, which was a CCTV. The 2017 Doverdale project, that's still being retained. The Doverdale project on the purge list, which you had requested, was for a CCTV project in 2014.
So 2017, I can file a right to know for that.
That still exists in the records. Yes, that was not the Doverdale file that you had requested.
That's not being purged.
Correct, they're two separate projects. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you, Courtney.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Lauren Bickel. State your name and address.
Lauren Bickel, 1st West Club Drive. Sixth meeting in 24 years. So it's been brought to my attention, there's a few council people that have no intentions of ever fixing this water issue that's occurring for 24 years now on West Club Drive. I'm really sorry to hear that. This poor lady came to get information and she's only, I've only been coming to feelings to hear that. Friday, the waterfall coming through that yard was unbearable. I have videos for you all to see. I would like to show everything you want, even if it's later at the end of the meeting. You need to see it in person if you haven't already. It's been brought to my attention, even some of the audience people told me that I should fix my own water problem. Meanwhile, I want that big asphalt on Strong City move, it still hasn't been done. How many more meetings do I have to go, another 24 years?
Well, Ms. Bickel, the engineer is going to address that in his report.
Okay. That's good. I also come in today, I thought we could have a room arrangement that we talked about. I don't talk about the executive session. It's not that hard to change a camera. A young lady's back should never be towards us. Everybody should always be facing your audience, your elected officials. We all pay taxes here. Nobody's back should be towards us. Anything you got to do is turn it, like I said, before an educator, I was a designer. It doesn't, it's not that hard to do. She should have turned back and addressed this down the avenue here. Next thing. Monday, West Club Drive was like the Indy 500. There must have been a water problem on Brownsville. There was a do not, or a road closed, a Curry. If you're looking at Brownsville coming up Curry, make a right-hand turn. There was another road closed sign at East Club and West Club. When I tell you from 1:12, when my husband came home from his mother's, till 2:20, when he left, there was 137 cars churning in every single driveway. If a little kid would have been out there, a dog would have been out there. I was an adult when I was caught yet. I'll sum it up. I said to my husband, I'm calling the police. He said, don't even bother. You know why? The police already came down. As I was coming down, they were leaving. I'm, we thought people were having a party and going to park. It was a disaster. So the police came down and they didn't even think about it. Where were the flaggers? I came in at night on Southview, Pennsylvania water again, they had their flaggers. The neighbor at the end had put a barrel and brooms across it. So people wouldn't come flying into his driveway and going in the past backyard. What the heck is going on? I'm sorry, Chief, but I'm really disappointed that the police weren't in on that too and left that scene. That was a disaster. The neighbors, we kept hearing all these noises, people, then I'm getting flicked off. I said, you have to slow down, people are going to get hit. Why should I get harassed on my street? That is terrible. So three issues. Still about the water. Six later, the, and then there's a no outlet sign. I think that no outlet sign or den-in should be, like at the streets that don't have that, because you can't turn around. So that and, you know, flaggers and stuff like that.
And your, address those issues earlier.
I know the police are busy doing their things, but my husband said one came down and nothing was happening there. And it was a disaster.
Okay, you know what? What's that? So Chief, did you want to address anything about that occurrence on, Monday?
There was a utility emergency on Brownsville Road.
It was by McEnolte, it was Pennsylvania water.
It was either the water or the gas company.
Yes, I thought it was the water like days.
They were reduced, I think they reduced the lane.
They did not.
So they can work. They caused the traffic issue. I didn't realize that they didn't have flaggers there. At one point, the officers were busy on other emergencies. There was a house fire that happened later on. They were all over there blocking Baldwin Manor to keep the fire department safe. We work with the utility contractors. We always ask them to give us timely notification. They don't. And they generally don't request us for traffic assistance when it comes to emergencies.
Well, this road, you can get around a little bit better. There were flaggers tonight and nothing on a one-way den-in street. I'm telling you, when I left at 4:00, they were still coming down. I mean, at one time, I thought the Fatf'ers were doing a movie. They all backed in or pulled in and were, I don't know how they didn't hit cars. It was crazy. So I just wanted to bring that to somebody's attention.
I would talk, I would talk, I'd explain the American water, just see what happens.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it was, it was a disaster.
I know, I drove up, I came down Brownsville Road and it just said road closed. I mean, there wasn't any warning, you know, any warning. I did a U-turn and on Brownsville Road, came back another way. And so it was, it was crazy. You're absolutely right.
I just couldn't believe it. We never, I thought somebody was having the biggest party ever on the street.
Well, the notification aspect, like the Chief mentioned, Chief mentioned, we have to find out what happened there.
I know there was an emergency utility.
Well, I don't want to just go, because I know you have other things, but I just couldn't believe the police were down and they left.
But it's good you brought that point out, so we can address that, because fairness, if there was no flaggers.
I'm going to be working on that Brownsville Road with that storm sore. I hope they let us know, because there's no way else to get out, but one way in, one way out. You know, so, we appreciate your help, please. Thank you.
Okay, we have bills and payable, Ms. Works.
Assistant, advantageary services, Mrs. DeKeel.
In order.
Plating and zoning, Mr. Luchetti.
In order.
Public safety, Mr. V.
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Zobrowski.
In order.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
And sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
And local fiscal recovery fund, Mrs. Luchetti.
In order.
Ask for a motion to remove bills on the bill list dated September 4th, 2024. From the general fund totaling $266,555.13. From the storm sewer fund totaling $28,985.80. From the sanitary sewer fund totaling $3,415.72. And from the local fiscal recovery fund totaling $223,708.82. So move.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would ask for a motion to ratify checks and transfers from the general fund totaling $34,794.58. From the payable fund totaling $62,432.75. For a grant total of application in the amount of $97,227.33.
So move.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not opposed. I just wanted to have it on the record as, I understand in accordance with Whitehall Code, 1,110, that payroll will continue as per public works union contract.
So what do you say?
Yes.
Payroll.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
With that comment.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, I would like a motion to ratify payroll for the paid date of August 23rd, 2024 in the amount of $213,431.38.
So move.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
There isn't overtime list attached to that.
All right, thank you. We have a next approval of the minutes of August 21, 2024, for the regular council meeting.
If there's no corrections, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st, seconds.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have our report, Mayor Noak.
Thank you, Madam President. First item I have is the monthly report for August 2024. EMS assist 179, court hearings pre-trial 96, accidents 11. Criminal arrests 13, traffic stops 128, traffic details 80. Traffic violations citations 56, and traffic violations warnings 108. And there doesn't seem to be any, the statistics for 2023 are comparable. The only difference, significant difference is traffic stops. It was 128 in 2023, there were 84, so significantly more traffic stops. Moneys collected and turned over to the borough during August 2024 totaled $2,584.65. Moving along, asphalt restoration work started last night on Baptist Road. Crews will be working from 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM tonight and Thursday. It's unknown if this asphalt work will continue into next week. And the work zone is between Grove and Hamilton Road. So I'm glad that this is occurring. I saw someone at a local restaurant, you know, recently and the first thing he said, he lives on Tom Fran, and he said how, you know, terrible it is coming down Baptist Road. So I'm glad this work is taking place. Registration is still open for the annual Whitehall Police Department Hunter Safety Program. It will be held on Saturday, September 21st, 2024 in the community room. And a link to the online registration portal is available on the police Facebook page. So if you know anybody who's looking for Hunter Safety, Hunter Safety training and certification, please inform them of this. All right, PC, do you have any, no fire company report? You did a great job. I'll give the fire company report. So I, you know, live in the neighborhood of a, you know, fire that recently took place on Old Boston. And the, I saw the next-door neighbor to the fire walking his dog. And I asked him, you know, I said, you know, a lot going on in your neighborhood recently. And all he could talk about was what a great job the Whitehall Fire Company did. You know, to come in and, you know, the Whitehall Fire Company not only fights fires, but they come in with a mindset that we want to preserve as much of this property as possible. And they do things to try to protect, you know, the property, owner's property, things like, I don't know if it happened in this case, but I can remember Police Chief Schmidt talking a long time ago about how he'll come in, throw tarps over furniture, you know, so that it doesn't get water damage. So I will tell you that, you know, reports are in our neighborhood, you did a fantastic job. So thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Noak, can I add to that?
Yes, absolutely.
I was also there, as was Mr. Luchetti. The family got a fantastic response from not only our community, but from the neighboring communities. Really appreciated the quick response and how many departments came to help mitigate what could have been a very larger, much larger loss for their family. Also, being on the other side and kind of just being able to be there to support friends and neighbors and seeing how, how firemen were able to support their family by answering questions and being there for their kids with distraction methods and being friendly. Can, do you want to come see the fire truck? Cannot say enough about their professionalism, both with the fire, but also with the community at large. Absolutely, great job.
All right, next item I have is a letter from a resident of Whitehall, of Sherwood Drive. Says, Dear Mayor Noak, I'm writing to describe an event which occurred on Sunday evening, August 25th of this year. Were contacted by the Whitehall Police Station staff member who informed us that a policeman on a patrol, a routine patrol, observed a car in our driveway with a dome light left on. Thankfully, the officer had discovered the light before it had a chance to drain the car's battery. What a fortunate turn of events, as my daughter Marjorie had an early morning engagement the next day. I called the police station and learned that the very alert officer who saw the light was named Sergeant Budd. Officer Budd's care and concern for Whitehall residents is to be commended. Those of us living in Whitehall Borough are fortunate to have such a dedicated servant of the public welfare. And for that, we are most certainly grateful. In a larger sense, it's safe to assume that his dedication is typical of the Whitehall police force generally. Your, my permission to convey the contents of this letter to Sergeant Budd is worthy of our gratitude. And he signed it, but since he didn't give me permission for me to share his letter, I'm not going to share it, but needless to say, our police are doing a fantastic job as well. And I will never miss an opportunity to point out, if we did not have a dispatch center, this problem would have never been corrected. Because what does a police officer do when he sees a light? Who does he call? He can't get a telephone number, but because we have a dispatch center that operates 24 hours, seven days a week, he was able to call the dispatch center and they were able to call the resident and take care of the problem. And this is not the first time that this happened, but I won't miss an opportunity to celebrate the way that we provide police services in Whitehall Borough.
We also call when you leave your garage doors open.
That's true.
Who was it naming?
Somebody laughed, you know, it might have just been a coincidence. All right, lastly, I thought I'd share a story with you. I was asked as President of Pennsylvania State Mayor's Association to participate in a PCN Civics 101. And so I went to Harrisburg to do this, this was being taped at 2:00 in the afternoon. And I participated with someone who represented the county elected officials, someone who represented the county commissioners, someone who represented the school board association. And I was pleased to be able to represent local government in boroughs, cities, and townships. And I will say that the very last question, this is, this is being done so that it can be shown to an audience of 5th through 12th graders. You know, so this could be shown to the Baldwin Whitehall School District. But the very last question was, you know, what can, you know, young people do, you know, to participate in government? And I was very pleased to be able to say that on the Whitehall Committee for Environmental Action, there are two nine-year-olds and one high school senior, all of whom contributed to recycling in Whitehall, in Whitehall Borough. I pointed out that the one nine-year-old is involved in marker recycling and has taken this project to her, her school, the Lutz School. The other one, also from Lutz, was involved in the eclipse glasses recycling. And then the high school senior helped to institute the plastics recycling that we have here in Whitehall Borough, in Baldwin Borough. And actually went to a Baldwin Borough meeting and made the pitch. So, you know, this was an opportunity for us to share, you know, what happens in our community, an opportunity for me to share what happens in our community as well as to talk about local government to 5th and 6th, 5th through 12th graders throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So, thank you very much. I, let me talk about that.
Oh, certainly, mate. So tell everybody where they can watch this.
I'm not sure when it's going to be. You want to go on PCN's website and find out when it's, when it's going to be available?
They had the schedule come up on there. Very good, that's great, Mayor. Any questions? Solicitor's report, Mr. Furman.
Thank you, I do not have a report.
Thank you, good. Engineer's report, Mr. Russ.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a written report to review with you this evening, stated August 30th. It will be brief this evening and I don't believe that there are any approvals needed for payment tonight. Under item two, the operation and maintenance plans, we have received all the contract documents from the contractors for the 2024 CCTV sewer excavation, the lining, and then the spot lighting repair contracts. They were delivered to the manager for signatures this evening. On page two, item four, the Overlook Park. Just to make counsel aware, we did have a final punch list inspection with the contractors and consultants on August 28th. Representatives from Caliber, Hanlon Electric, First American Industries, and, I'm sorry, and Control Climate Systems were present for the inspection. Items identified have been provided to the contractors, so corrections can't be made.
Do we have a possible date till we can open that park?
I will know more tomorrow after 11:30 on how the repairs to the asphalt parking and the railing will be made and what their timeline is.
Ball parking, are we thinking short or are we thinking a couple of weeks?
I would say it's a couple of weeks.
All right. Safety Farks, thank you.
Yes. For phase two of Overlook Park, that's the bituminous walkway and stairs to Spring Valley. The project has been advertised and you're looking at a bid opening date of October the 9th. Under item 10, on page three, is the pool construction, the pool cover project. Bids are due to the borough on September 11th. We'll see how that goes. Under item 12, the pavement maintenance.
I have a question about that. On the installing, is that something Mayor Public Works can do?
No.
Okay, so is that going to be an issue to?
No.
Will we be able to get somebody to install right away?
Will the cover be on before winter time?
That's my question, thank you.
I'm not certain, Mr. V, that it will be on during winter, but I think it can be installed during the winter. It has to be, well, first we have to have, you know, successful bidder, it has to be awarded. Then the pool cover would have to be made. So there's going to be some lead time for that as soon as it can be installed. It will.
We'd have to drain the pool?
You have to drain the water down slightly when the.
Okay, but we won't have to, do?
I don't believe we'll have to.
Should we be preparing that pool for winter? And just delay the idea of covering it for next year once we are completely ready instead of spending?
I think we should receive the bid, once we receive bids, we have conversations with the contractor on that lead time. I think that decision can be made then. So you would be looking at the, your potential award is September 18th. So the next meeting.
So we're going to be running all the, running the equipment up there until?
The pumps are still running, yes.
Pumps are still running.
Until it's winterizing.
The gatters and the baskets, clean out the debris catchers.
I was hearing that.
Someone would have to go up and clean out the debris catchers.
So staff is still going to be on site. The pool kids are coming back this weekend, you know, they're at school this week. They'll be doing their normal cleanup as far as putting the chairs and everything in the bathhouse, cleaning out the office, cleaning up the guard room, those things that they do. Public Works will also be up there doing, you know, trying to revive the grasses, our pool for this fall. So there will be staff up there, I think, until we get the pool cover bid and see what action council takes. Staff is not in a rush to winterize it, it is looking still warmish. They don't think there's a rush on the weather side. So we're not going to play it by ear the next few weeks until you guys make a decision.
Are we going to have to do this every year? Can't somebody do is reinstall it? No, just the initial installation. I don't believe that it'll be required. I believe that is something that the borough or the Public Works Department could handle.
Great.
Just one more question about this. I understand that there was only one bidder who went to the measurement pre-qualification meeting. So one might expect one or possibly zero, I hope there's at least one pool cover bid happening come September 11th. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Under item 12, the pavement maintenance program. Mealy and Mealy are, they are working through the list of streets. Milling and binder has been completed, so that project could be wrapped up again in the next week as far as the wearing course install goes. And then just finally on, or not finally, but the last thing in the August 30th report on page four is the Merza Solar Candles. It is on the same schedule as Overlook Phase Two. The project has been advertised and the bid opening is slated for October the 9th at 11:00 AM. And then finally, I do have a report for council regarding the West Club Drive and the existing drainage swell. It's a memorandum of the council, it's dated September 3rd. Gateway has reviewed the existing conditions of West Club Drive and the drainage swell to Curry Road. As currently constructed, West Club Drive is approximately 525 feet in length from its start at Brownsville to its terminus at 19 and 32 West Club, with a variable width ranging from approximately 17 foot six to approximately 21 foot eight inches. The roadway slopes away from Brownsville Road towards 19 and 32 West Club and was originally constructed without stormwater improvements. An asphalt wedge curb runs along the low side of, from Brownsville Road to the driveway at 19 West Club. Stormwater runoff currently flows from the roadway into the drainage swell located along the property lines of 4655 Curry Road and 19 West Club Drive. The swell then discharges into an existing yard inlet near 4655 Curry Road. The swell is comprised of bituminous pavement, vegetated earth and berm, a section of steel pipe laid on the surface of the ground, and landscaped rock. As requested by council, Gateway has reviewed the deeds, sorry, the available deeds, agreements, and recorded plans to determine whether the existing swell can be replaced with storm sewer improvements. can be replaced with storm sewer improvements. In order to construct the proposed storm sewer improvements, storm sewer easements will be required from the property owners of 4629 Curry Road, 4655 Curry Road, 19 West Club Drive, and 32 West Club Drive as the existing swell is in an unrecorded 10-foot alleyway. Please note that the construction of the proposed storm sewer improvements will require tree clearing at 4629 Curry, 4655 Curry Road, and 19 West Club Drive. In addition, the elimination of the drainage swell will not change the subsurface groundwater conditions or ponding at 4655 Curry Road. A preliminary plan with an opinion of construction cost is attached to this memorandum. And if you have any questions, I can entertain them at this time.
Questions, anyone?
I have a question that's totally unrelated to this, though nobody else has any questions, regarding the whole West Club Drive and everything like that. The county apparently is, there's rumors that they might come in and put the two storm drains at the top of West Club and Brownsville. I was wondering, while they are there and while we have a line of communication open with them, I heard a lot of complaints and a lot of residents would like to see a stop sign on Brownsville at McEnolde there. Is that a possibility? Because I know it's a dangerous bend and there's been lots of talk about doing something about it. We put those, you know, arrows and the speed thing in. But other people had mentioned that they would like to see a stop sign there. And I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate on that. Are we allowed to have a stop sign there or?
We would have to go. We would have to go to the county. The county owns the road. They would have to complete the traffic study to see if it's worth.
Yeah, and it's highly, it's going to be highly unlikely. I can tell you that the residents of Brownsville Road came to Whitehall Borough Council to try to, you might not even have been an officer.
Several times.
They came to council to try to slow the traffic down. So we had a traffic survey done. I think we had to pay for it because we were asking the county to slow it down. And they would not, they would not agree, you know, agree to have it slowed down. So I think the likelihood, meanwhile, you know, the likelihood of them putting a stop sign in and stopping it completely when it didn't warrant a, you know, a reduction in the speed is, you know, it's, just whoever's asking, you might want to, you know, convey that. But they did. They came up. Council was receptive. We had the study done. And after the study was done, it didn't appear to be warranted by the, you know, the speed that was going along there. I can tell you that the same thing happened on Baptist. And we were able to get a five mile per hour reduction on Baptist, but we were not able to get any kind of reduction. It was just a thought.
Okay. But like I said, does anybody think it's worth bringing up while the county's in our area? I mean, they're literally right down the road.
We wouldn't bring it up to the county Public Works. We have to go through their, I think it's their traffic engineer department. We met with the county within the last five years because of the issue with the accidents on the bend just north of McEnolde. They discussed a lot of different options. They weren't inclined to put any, they weren't inclined to put a red light anywhere. They weren't inclined to put stop signs anywhere on Brownsville. Their, what they were willing to do, their solution based off the traffic studies at the time, was better signage. The Borough decided to put the radar speed signs up there just for a little more added effect. They weren't even, they weren't even willing to do that. What they did is they put the chevrons on the, on the bend and then they painted the white signs on the roadway to warn people to slow down and showing which way the curvature of the road's going to go. And my time being here and prior to me, every serious accident, especially the fatalities on that bend, have not necessarily been speed. They've been related to DUIs.
In most of the cases, aren't they all on Brownsville, on Brownsville Road? It's not McEnolde at all. Am I right where that intersection is? Most of the accidents we've heard, major accidents, have all been coming on Don Drive and Still Road. At the bend, and that's why we put.
In that specific, I mean, we've had other serious accidents in other parts of Whitehall and other roadways, but that bend has probably had the most fatal accidents. And the vast majority of them have been related to driving under the influence. We've also had several motor vehicle accidents during the day on the straightaway at Brownsville. For whatever reason, people veer off driving home from work and they like to take out telephone calls.
Want to make a comment or anything?
Sure, Roy. Just real quick. When you make a right-hand turn out of West Club, you can see from the Curry direction easier. But when you go to make a left-hand turn, what the problem is, there's a little dip right across from where the golf course is right there. And the dip is so low that when you make the left, you think it's okay, then the next thing you know, there's somebody right on your tail. I think if something could be done with that dip just to make, I don't know if it can be done, to make it a little bit higher, because that's an issue to me. And I can see that. If you're a low car, you really can't, you know, see that too well and then the cars come. If you would just try to make that left and see what I'm talking about, you really can't see because of how it dips down. And I think that would take care of some of the problem. But again, I just wanted to mention that because you might not know that if you don't live there.
Right, right. And experience that.
That's why everybody that had children on that street, no matter what, they said make the right-hand turn and go turn around. They never make a left-hand turn out of there when they learn to drive.
It hurts them fast, too.
Yeah. Just wanted to mention that. You might not know that.
Oh, you're knowledgeable. You're right.
Mr. Solicitor, this is a question for you. Since the engineer has given a summary of this report to Whitehall Council with its attached itemized list of scope costs and the map was also mentioned in the man, the engineer's report. I just want to know, would it be all right to go ahead and add that to the minutes as they become approved of this? Because we've had the new convention of including everything about the Gateway Engineers Reports.
It's, it's not, it's up to council how they want things attached. There's no legal impediment to.
Yes, I would like to request that this be included in the scope.
Okay, so when you were saying, Beth Lynn, you want to have this report that Scott just referenced and you talked about added to the official minutes that's going to be published?
Absolutely. It was part of the engineer's report and we said that that's what we were going to do. And I think that that's in accordance with what we were going to do.
I don't think that would happen. Well, it's going to be part of the minutes or not, right? So the minutes, you know, it's either part of the minutes or.
Okay.
You get, I mean, if you want it to be part of the minutes, then the staff will make it part of the minutes if you.
So why don't you just make a consensus?
And then if it comes up to the vote, somebody says, I want to approve it without the, you know, the report, it can be discussed at that time. But like, you know, they can prepare either way.
It would be part of the motion at the next meeting for approval of these minutes.
Right.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I don't mind it. But Scott went through all that effort taking it up and getting the pictures. I'd like to.
Oh, it's very informative.
You know, I'd like, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure people want to see it.
We'll pass that at the next meeting to approve it.
Okay, so to clarify, are we going to have to make a motion to motion or is this going to be a part of the approval of the minutes?
I think when the minutes are circulated, you know, they'll, they'll be, if people, if they're there, if council didn't want it or wanted it, they would be able to change it. But it would be what the minutes staff prepares.
Very well.
Okay.
So they have all the pictures, you know, all the goodies in it do?
Yep, map.
And let's present.
So when, when the president calls for, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Because Beth Lynn can make a motion that in addition to the minutes would be.
For irregularly estimates.
Or, or, or if they're not included, if they are included, someone can make a motion to exclude them.
Okay.
So that'll be at the next meeting.
My guess is it'll include.
So the staff could choose to include it on their own based on prior decisions of council? And if they're, if they are, then it's moot. If they're not, then the motion could be made to add that to the minutes.
Yes, that's the process. It'll be one or the other.
Which will be done at the next meeting?
No legal issue.
Very well.
All righty. Okay. Anything else here? We have manager, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. First item of my report is in regards to the internal infrastructure and live streaming. In your packet, you have quotes that were received from three vendors. The lowest quote received was from Data Davis Communications in the amount of $11,713.50. It does include an all-in-one conference microphone solution specifically designed for Microsoft Teams, two PTZ web cameras, which stands for point to zoom. And additionally, in the packet there, our internal IT has identified a mini PC that would connect with that system and allow us to operate. Our IT's labor is deducted from our annual contract. So that being said, I ask that council accept the low quote, to accept the live streaming quote from Data Davis Communications in the amount of $11,713.50.
So move.
Second. Motion's made second on favor, say aye or aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimously.
Next up on my report and included in your packet is the PennDOT Snow and Ice Agreement. The state has forwarded the new agreement covering the years of the winter seasons 2024 slash 2025 through 2029, 2030. The reimbursable amount for this current winter season is $19,092.66. There will be 2% annual increases over the length of the five-year contract. So council will need to pass a resolution, which is in your packet there, authorizing council president and myself to sign the agreement, which is also in your packet. So before you, I ask for a motion to first read the resolution and then adopt it.
Okay, like a motion to read the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made second on favor, say aye or aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Be resolved by authority of the council of the Borough of Whitehall, Allegheny County. It is hereby resolved by authority of the saying that the council president of said municipality be authorized and directed to sign the attached agreement on its behalf. I ask for motion to approve Resolution 1040.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Rule call vote?
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. DePew?
Yes.
Mrs. Eiker?
Yes.
Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Yes.
And Mr. D.
Yes.
Motion carries.
unanimously. Thank you.
Next on my report is in regards to pension MMOs. The Borough's actuary has prepared the MMOs for both plans, the police and the non-uniform. The police MMO is $907,807. The non-uniform MMO is $152,939. The non-uniform plan decreased by almost $18,000, while the uniform plan increased almost $40,000. So I ask that council authorize these figures for the 2025 Borough budget.
So move.
A couple of questions for discussion. I know on both the police and the non-uniform plan that this was prepared using the January 1st of 2023 valuation of what we saw payroll being like back then. But we've had raises, we've had some turnover. How are we sure that these numbers are accurate given the turnover?
Can I answer that? Okay, so we had a pension meeting, right? And these, we discussed this at the meeting. These are professional people that are coming up with these, these numbers. So we have to rely, there isn't anybody on, I don't think, maybe the solicitor, who's capable of, you know, second guessing our professionals who have, you know, come up with these numbers. So I would say that, you know, we should just accept them. And remember that it's not like we're losing money. We're just taking it from one place where the Borough has control and we're putting money in another place where the Borough has control, you know, in the pension fund. We're still in control of that, you know, that pension. We're not, you know, it's not like we're giving it to somebody and we're losing it. If we made a mistake, it's just going to another pot, you know, another account that we have. So I wouldn't worry about it. No, there's not anybody looking around here, except for maybe the solicitor, that would attempt to second guess the, you know, the actuary and, you know, the people that come up with these, these figures.
Well, we did have a $300,000 miss allocation just this year in the pension. So I, yeah, I'm with, I'd like to definitely make sure that this is okay. I want to make sure any staff that, you know, is going to collect a pension, this is all good for them.
We didn't have a misallocation.
Okay, then what was it?
What was it? We were, yeah, we were told, do you want to?
It was a clerical error. Instead of making the MMO payment in one payment, two transactions were made. The Borough lost no funds. The pension funds themselves lost no funds. They are, actually, the non-uniform, in fact, is overfunded. They're very healthy.
Exactly. It's just moving it from one Borough account to another Borough account.
But we did have to pay like a penalty, right?
No, we didn't have to pay a penalty. What we had to do, we had to find, look, again, the accounts are all ours. They're ours. We're not giving it to somebody else, a third party somewhere. They're our account. It's either a pension account or it's, you know, our general operating account. And it went from general operating, we're putting additionally more money to the pension. But it's still, we have control of all of that. We didn't lose any money. It was just we needed to.
Yeah, I just, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure because, you know, I want to make sure our guys are good later in life. And the last pension meeting, it was, you said that you would invite me to, and you did. And it was like at like noon? And you invited me like the day of? So maybe next time, can I, you know, I just want to make sure.
Okay, that's just an ideal thing, right?
If, yeah, I may. I, I sit on the, on the police pension committee. Your question was about twenty twenty-three figures?
Yes, yes.
That, that, that report is on a two-year cycle, right? The next one is, isn't due until twenty twenty-five. But the borough has to make an annual payment to the pension fund. So the actuary, they have a formula that's complicated that they use to show what the municipality's minimal municipal obligation, that's what MMO stands for, is each year. So they are going off in twenty twenty-three, but the formula that they use factors in cost of living adjustments.
Actuary tables.
Actuary tables and inflation. And then in twenty twenty-five, the next study is done, that's used for two years. That, that's, that's a state standard, it's under Act six hundred? An Act two oh five. It's, we don't really have any control over that. The state tells the auditors how to do this. They have a whole procedure set in place.
Actuary.
Actuary.
Sure.
Yeah, so all of this is coming from an outside professional who is looking at this. This is their job to do, using state, under state law.
And, and we're over, you know, slightly overfunded in the non-union, and the union is as solid as it can be, the, the police pension fund.
I've been the police pension representative on the committee for almost a decade now. Trust me, if there was a problem with the retirees, we would know, there's never been one.
With any of them.
With any of them.
I have one other question. Um, I, I do note that we had gone down. Was it due to the, the percentage or the, the number of active participants in the non-uniform payroll?
It's a number of factors. It is, it's again, a formula, it takes into account various actuarial tables, forecasts. If it's, actuarial science is a science beyond my comprehension, to be quite honest. So I can't pinpoint it to one specific factor.
Okay. Well, because I did note that, um, the commonwealth rate did decrease. So I, I do believe that that would be possible, that the, the percentage rate decreased from last year. But it would be nice to know, um, exactly how the, this table was calculated, as I had specifically requested prior. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then just a quick grant update on our tennis court refurbishment grant. Um, that has been submitted and we did gain, uh, county council member John Polmieri's support thanks to Merino Walks intervention. So fingers crossed on that. And then, last but not least, this morning, the chief and myself spoke with our IT about our .gov domain. We have secured Whitehall Borough, the O R O officially. They will not allow us to retain Whitehall Borough spout out.
For trying.
Yeah, we did, we did attempt. I went back and forth quite a bit.
Yeah.
But that being said, we have turned over those domains to our IT. And we're going to start the process of doing everything over, and we are confident that that will happen within the month.
Design, but email addresses as well?
Yes, it will be the email and the website, um, but catch me if I'm wrong here. Basically, your existing .org email will redirect to your .gov. At some point, we will need to look at your business cards, uh, but for the time being, it will still function and will show up in your boxes.
Do you, do you think? We still maintain ownership of the .org.
Correct, yes, we still have that domain.
And you think that the reason that they would not give us vote is that there are other Whitehalls in the country? Because I know Whitehall, we get confused with Whitehall Township. It's not they all, it's on the other end of the state. But, but if there's another Whitehall, say in the, in the state of Ohio, and they wanted a, you know, Whitehall dot, you know, they, they would not be able to get that, right?
They didn't explicitly state that there, and I'm, but I'm sure that is a, a component of it. Their rationale is that they only assign one .gov per entity. So you can't sit on them necessarily. And I'm sure it's because there are many other Whitehall boroughs. Not, well, not PA, but maybe Ohio, you know, California, Texas. Um, but they did not explicitly state that.
Yeah, for instance, there was two Jefferson boroughs in, in the state of Pennsylvania. One in York County and one here. And that's the reason why Jefferson Borough changed its name to Jefferson Hills, because it was getting confused with the Jefferson Borough that's in, uh, York County. So, so that's probably why, you know, we couldn't keep voting.
I would doubt it.
Okay, thank you. A slight comment. One of the reasons we're changing is that at a conference we were at, several of us heard speaker talk about, it's a .gov, there are some protections that the, the government can help you with, some things they can help you with. That's the reason for, for this change. Something goes wrong, which can, hopefully, you might be able to get a little help.
And a number of municipalities are doing it. I think, uh, this morning Dennis said that he had had three calls already about this specific transition. So it is becoming the norm across municipalities.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to Assistant Manager Report.
Do you want to have a report with you, Dan?
Thank you. Our committee reports, public safety, Mr. Bee.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just one report here from the chief. Uh, the chief reports, traffic cameras at the intersection of Route fifty-one and Streets Road, Run Road were updated last month. This was a joint capital project between Whitehall and Baldwin Police Departments. Representative, is it Cannon? I can't remember who he is, then continues to search for grant funding to cover the cost of this upgrade. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bee? Move on to Administrative Services, Mrs. DePew.
Unfortunately, Administrative Services Committee meetings have, as all committee meetings, have to be advertised. And they were all advertised in January. So we have not, we're not able to have a meeting about changing the structure of this room. And so that is on hold, but that's one of the reasons why, because the state says we have to advertise and do it at that time. So that's all I have.
When's the next one?
They're October.
Twenty-eighth?
No, I don't. Eight.
Twenty-eighth, Monday?
No, it's the eighth.
The eighth.
What is it? Yes, October eighth.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was October eighth.
Change till next year, if it changes at all?
Probably. To be honest, probably. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Mr. Lucetti.
Yes, uh, planning commission will meet next week, September eleventh. The commission plans to continue work on prospective zoning ordinance amendments regarding uses in commercial zoning districts. Uh, the zoning hearing board will meet on Tuesday, September seventeenth. And the following items are on the agenda. To render a decision on case twenty twenty-four Z H B zero seven, um, for four five four one County Club Drive, the applicants appealed the denial of an accessory use building permit by the borough zoning officer pursuant to the maximum height requirements in the zoning code. And they will hold a hearing, uh, for five three oh one Grove Road, Suite six thirty-nine. The applicant requests the variance to allow an enclosed freezer cooler addition at Gianna Via Restaurant to encroach into a required yard on a corner lot. Additionally, um, earlier this year, the planning and zoning committee met to discuss drafting a sidewalk installation policy. And that came about after a resident, back in February, made mention of wanting more sidewalks in the borough. That specific issue was about sidewalks on, along Grove Road. And while the actual implementation of sidewalks is more difficult and costly, uh, discussion, we first need to have a policy on sidewalks in the borough in general. And I just wanted to check with council that, um, this is something to continue pursuing. Our next steps would be to get feedback from the borough engineer and solicitor, and then having another committee meeting to discuss and then move the policy along the process. So this is just to confirm that this is something to pursue for this committee, to a sidewalk installation policy. Objections?
What does council, have any comments on this? To pursue it?
Yeah, this is just to have a policy and then fine tune it and then present to council for further discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, pass.
Why not?
Right.
Good.
Okay.
That's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Library, Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, the library board will meet next Wednesday, um, and we'll have a full report at the following meeting on the eighteenth here with council. But I would like to provide a quick plug for them. September is Love Your Library Month, and much of the donations that we get are matched. So donating to the library this month is doubly good. In, in an effort to make things more exciting for the adults, on the twentieth, at the library, will be, um, an evening, a magical night at Whitehall Public Library, featuring a Baldwin resident and graduate, Lytra Rosick, who is, um, rather famous for his magic, um, and his illusion skills. I've actually seen him live, he's quite impressive. Tickets are thirty-five dollars a person. It includes drink tickets, there will be, um, refreshments and snacks and lots of other activities held throughout the library that night. Really encourage everybody to go onto the library's website and register. Tickets are only thirty-five dollars. They're going fast, so please come and join us. Um, I'll be there, it's super fun. Come see us at the library. That's all I have, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Thomas? Move on to, um, public works, Masai. Oh, I'm sorry, recreation, Mr. Sobrowski.
Yeah, Anna's here. She has a report.
Hello. Um, so the pool season has come to an end, unfortunately. We received an abundance of com- comments thanking the pool staff, maintenance, and administrative staff on a wonderful summer. Residents are counting down the days until Memorial Day in twenty twenty-five. Um, some feedback we did receive, um, which is a quote, "Such a great summer, enjoy meeting new friends and hanging out with old friends in the neighborhood. Friendly staff, they did a great job keeping an eye on everyone and look forward to next summer. Thank you for the great memories for sure." Staff appreciates feedback and likes hearing the positive comments like these. It really highlights the great asset the pool is to the community. Our total revenue for twenty twenty-four is one thousand, one hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents. And we average about four hundred and fifty people a day.
Wonderful.
We are already working on expanding activities for the twenty twenty-five pool season, um, to jump into Community Day. The survey has closed. Um, I wanted to share with you some data and comments about Community Day. Eighty percent of people saw advertisements for Community Day on Facebook. Fifty-seven percent saw yard signs. Seventy-five percent of those people participated in vendor booths, the highest activity. And ninety-five percent of people said they would attend Community Day in twenty twenty-five. Um, most of the additional comments included, "It's our favorite day of the year and another great job, um, well done. We have the most amazing Community Day, thanks to all that make it happen." And then planning has begun for Community Day, August ninth of twenty twenty-five. Um, unfortunately, due to the weather over the weekend, we were unfortunately unable to have our last concert in the park. We had a great summer of concerts, and I've already scheduled bands for twenty twenty-five concert series. Um, Touch a Truck is this Sunday, um, uh, September eighth, from twelve to three, at Baldwin High School. Children of all ages can experience and explore the exciting vehicles. Come out for a fun-filled day, grab a bite to eat and a sweet treat. Um, the gimmick, I apologize. The communication plan that was adopted by council in April of twenty twenty-two has been a great resource of feedback for the Recreation Department and engaging residents. Staff has accomplished, staff is accomplishing many objectives in our mission to inform residents about borough news, activities, and events. We continue to build upon these successes and do what we can to inform the residents. Recently, I posted a princess and superheroes party, um, on our event portal, um, without any advertisement at all. Just simply posting that, we are over, we have sold over fifty tickets. Um, and then lastly, our events are becoming so well-known by vendors in the community. I've had multiple food trucks reach out to me wanting to get on our calendar, um, because what they have heard about our, our events.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great summer.
And the recreation board. Thank them all, on council and the community. Do a fantastic job. All right, next we have public works, Masai.
Um, I, I have nothing to report, and I'm going to, um, turn it over to the borough manager to see if there is anything to report on, on the hiring that she is doing for, uh, any public works labor.
Uh, applications were due on Monday. Uh, Eric has been out, so I've not had a chance to connect with him and his review of, you know, who we would like to, to bring in for interviews. So there's nothing to report then.
Uh, I, I think you meant Tuesday, but, but yes, thank you.
I, I'd just like to add, public works, the job they get on the sign up front, not on the floor.
Oh, yeah, looks great.
Beautiful, yes, thank you very much. It is gorgeous, yes, very nice. Okay. All right, next we have parks, Mrs. DePew.
Okay, the Parks Committee did have a very interesting meeting. Threw around lots of ideas and suggestions. Kind of would like to suggest that there are some grants out there for some maybe low-hanging fruits and some grants we could get, maybe mulch or a paved walk into something. And we're thinking that it probably is worthwhile to go ahead and get those before we plan another major renovation like we did at Overlook Park. But the second part of it was, there was a sports summit meeting of the major sports, uh, I think Baldwin was there, someone from Baldwin, and someone from Whitehall. Courtney was there. I did not attend because we didn't want to make it a political-type meeting. So it was pretty much the sports getting together to talk about what they needed and to talk to one another about what they needed. So can you fill them in on?
Yeah, so Hannah and I started.
We'll do turn around so they can.
Hannah and I started meeting with the sports organizations, the youth sports organizations, almost two, three years ago. Um, so we've been really engaging them, um, to, to get feedback from them on what are their needs. They are vastly growing in different ways that I don't think anyone really anticipated. I personally didn't know what lacrosse was five years ago. It's huge. Um, so we've been meeting with them in the background. We did meet again last evening. We updated them on the most recent Parks Committee meeting and discussed these, you know, we call it our small projects priority list, to get their feedback, if there's something they're seeing in the parks that we're not, you know, to bring it to our attention. If there's something on this list that they don't think is as big of a priority maybe as we do. So we're waiting for feedback on that. We've updated them on the playground installation at Highlands, making sure that, you know, we work around their permits. Uh, also, Overlook Park, the update on that, um, that won't impact any of their ability to use the park next year. Uh, we will make sure that the, the steps are sectioned off.
Excuse me, while you're on Overlook Park, we, you did show them
Yes.
the estimated cost of doing the whole park. The original plan, drainage for baseball and all.
So that.
They know about what that would cost.
Correct.
Would be seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Just under eight hundred thousand. And their consensus was essentially that that's great, but they would like to see that kind of money and funding directed to Snyder. Uh, if you recall, back in the fall, we had done a design meeting and engaged the community with, I believe it was four plans. Uh, overwhelmingly, design number six, which was a multi-sport, you know, use of that park, was identified as, as the preference of the, the people and the groups. That's going to be very expensive. Um, so I think putting that into perspective, they appreciated that. They talked with us about grant opportunities that they may have for, you know, a football organization or soccer organization through Dick's Sporting Goods. Um, and they are willing to, to leverage, you know, what they can get as a five oh three, five, five oh three, C, C, thank you. Um, and work with that to come up with a funding plan if that is the intent, you know, of, of council and the committee. So really great positive discussion. They, you know, repeatedly said that they appreciate that Hannah and I continue to engage them and just keep tabs. Often in youth sports organization, you know, your kid age is out, you, you see some turnover there. Um, so it's really been helpful to have some type of consistency, um, in keeping records to, to fill them in on the conversations of the past and where we want to go. That being said, they did request that we have another meeting in about two months' time. Um, and they would like to bring Baldwin Borough back into the conversation as well as the school district. When we first started this two years ago, we invited all the municipalities in Baldwin Whitehall School District. Baldwin Borough did attend. We had some representation from the school district, um, and then that kind of fell off, um, for whatever reason. But Hannah and I have stuck it out, continuing to engage them and, and making it known that they can communicate with us. So we're going to try for that sometime in November and report back then.
Good job. Thank you for your engagement and continuing to work with those groups. I think that communication is going to be super important as we're moving forward with Snyder and other, other park improvements. So thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, next our delegate reports, and I'll go first. The Allegheny County Boroughs Association and Allegheny League of Municipalities. And I'll be attending next month, the Fall Conference. So I'll want to come back, I'll report on that. It will tell a lot of interesting updates, of course. Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, um, April second. Every year, we have resolutions that are proposed by, anyone in the community can give an idea. We write a resolution, submit it. And our PSAB are obvious, it's in Harrisburg, and we've got a lot of things. Again, I know I mention it often, but it can't be stressed enough. Uh, the mayor's radar and our, um, our roads with the borough sewage repairs and stuff, yes, the under. So we have a lot of things up there for Whitehall Borough, for sews, you know, on behalf of, people give us an idea. We can write something up and, and see how it flies up there. All the membership, the nine hundred and fifty-six boroughs in Pennsylvania vote on it. And then our lobbyists go up there, like I said, so, you know, anything could happen. You have a good idea, just pass it on to us, we'll discuss. Uh, next we have, um, our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Bee.
I'll refer to Cory. I think you go to the luncheons, right?
Yes, and actually, uh, there is one tomorrow. Uh, Hannah and I will be attending. And the superintendents from both the Brentwood School District and the Baldwin Whitehall School District will be attending. So really looking forward to that. They've got a couple of events coming up in September. On the fourteenth is their annual shredded event at the G B U, G B U Life on Route fifty-one. So if anyone has anything to get rid of, that's the.
What day is that, the shredded?
That's the September fourteenth.
Thanks.
And then they have their annual, uh, community golf outing on the sixteenth of September, that's a Monday. And then looking forward to next month, um, the October third luncheon, uh, our chief of police will be speaking with his counterparts from Baldwin and Brentwood. So looking forward to that. And then we will actually be hosting a coffee chat here in council chambers on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Of October, yes.
Thank you very much. Lots of activity there. Mertz's Board, Mr. Lucetti.
Yes, um, Mertz's Board met last week on August twenty-eighth. Uh, just to update numbers, Whitehall had two hundred and fifty-seven calls in July of twenty twenty-four, and that was an eight percent reduction from the previous, previous month. And the average response time for emergent calls was seven minutes, thirty-nine seconds, which is below their, uh, Mertz's goal of eight minutes. Uh, but the more important part is another money request. Uh, Mertz is going, Mertz is beginning their annual membership drive. Uh, they've started their requests online with social media, and in October, you should be expecting mailings. So, um, keep your eye out for that and please renew your membership.
Okay, thank you.
Shaycock.
That's vegan.
Mr. Bee.
Okay, I did attend a meeting on the fifteenth of August. Judge, uh, Ron Arnone was there, and a question was asked regarding how do you catch violators of deer that are feeding them? Because you can't, it's very difficult to do this, Mark, this might help you. I don't know, maybe we try this. He said at Upper St. Clair and Double Park, they actually use cameras. And they have the, I don't know, they, this, do they hide the cameras? I don't know, but, but anyway, that's, you know, because you know you can't do anything unless you're in the act, all right? So they're using cameras, and they're having a little bit of success with that. All right, uh, I'm just passing on what you want.
Or, or if you're a neighbor and you see, you know, violation of Whitehall Borough ordinance, you could be the witness.
Get a little camera on the deer's head.
We can, we can put that in a budget next year. Second thing, this is good news. Uh, we are in the first year of a five-year contract with voice management. We are in the first year of a five-year contract with Voice Management. And we were all shocked at the thirty percent increase that we had to pay. You know what the increase is now? Approximately eighty seven percent. So we're very fortunate that we got in when we did. All right, we got at least another almost four and a half years left, so. And then the third item, Courtney's aware of this as well. Lou Gorsick, who's been at Shake Hall, I think since, the executive director since nineteen eighty four, eighty five. He's been there forever. Anyway, they're looking into a succession plan. Lou's not real side of ideas, but he, you know, it's the idea of his, he's not going anywhere. Sorry, he's not going anywhere. But they don't, you know, because of his age and things like that, they want to have a plan, just kind of what we did here, similar with, you know, Mr. Levin, Courtney. So they just want to have a plan in place, and that's what they're talking. I think there's, what, four Borough Managers that are involved in that right now?
At least, yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's all we got. That's a really good report, wasn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Beeth.
Mr. Beeth, and Ms. Worts, any updates on tracking down that title for that old tractor truck?
I haven't heard of it, Courtney, I mean, I know that.
We've identified the title belongs to Alagany, the chief ran the van for us. But it is, Shake Hall is aware, it's an issue with the county, quite frankly, and they're, I guess. So it's just really, we're waiting to hold up, it's there with their.
There's been a quest, I can assure you of that.
Yes, they're aware of it, but there's no movement on the county side. And there is an agency within the county that holds the title to it. And until they kind of get there.
The county Public Works or somebody else?
No, it's a, it's.
Shake Hall used to use it.
Correct.
It was a Shake Hall vehicle, it was stored here. Now we just got to get ahold of the entity, and the entity might not still be in existence.
Okay.
And it's going to have to probably be towed out, right?
Oh, absolutely.
And we can't just tow it and discard it because that would be theft, we don't have. And we just have to go through the county.
Which Lou is, is working on, but again, it's the county, that's the whole.
Is there a time limit here? I mean, how long do we have to wait for them to respond?
Twenty years.
I mean, I know we're doing what we can, reaching out, as Ms. Iker suggested, but so.
Should we treat it like abandoned property in Prospect Park? We tried to build a storage. If it costs them money, they'd be more quickly get rid of it.
Right there.
Okay.
The police department deals with abandoned vehicles and issues like that.
Yeah.
I know that people don't like seeing it there. Luckily, it's closed now. The lot doesn't get as much use as it does. I think we're better off going through the county process for them to identify who owns it and to give the proper instructions and permission to have it towed out of here and destroyed. And to be honest with you, they own it, they should get it and have it destroyed.
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And that was new business?
Yes.
I have one too, go ahead, Ms. Iker.
Okay, yes, thank you. So for Council and for those here that were here in our meeting a month ago, I brought up the idea of a new program to facilitate matching people within the community that need assistance with outdoor projects, with people that are willing in the community to volunteer to assist those. I've been working with Ms. Worts, Mr. Furman, in an effort to get this program on the ground a little bit more. We are still in the works, but I wanted to kind of provide a little bit of a teaser maybe on where we're headed with this. So we will have the ability to have folks in the community say, "I, I need help." What do you need help with? Snow. We don't have a lot of it anymore, but snow. Leaves. So many leaves are coming our way, right? Grass cutting and then maybe light weeding, spring cleanup, okay? We're starting small, we're starting outside. We're starting where our program can really gain traction, getting our residents that need assistance to sign up. We'll have a variety of ways for that to happen. There are going to be some requirements around that. Two of the main kind of requirements, though, this isn't the full list, please understand that. We're looking at folks that are sixty two years of age or older or someone that has a physical disability and is unable to do these types of chores kind of outside of their home. On the other side, we'll have an area to gather online, stopping in the Borough Building, volunteers. We are starting with folks that are of the age of eighteen or older. However, we know that we have a lot of young folks that really want to get involved in their community. We just need them to have an adult that's eighteen years of age or, or older with them. So a whole family can go and volunteer together. It's a great way to teach your kids how to be a neighbor, right? It's a great way for our sports teams to come and get a big project done at a neighbor's yard with their coach, right? So there is more to come. There will be a sign-up sheet on both sides and a really nice streamlined way through our Borough Office to get folks connected that need help with those that are willing to help. Once we have absolutely everything lined up, we'll announce the name and the start date of the program. Do we need anything from Council? Do we need a resolution or an ordinance or something?
I think, I think that Ms. Worts is still tracking down some information.
She is from the insurance company, but.
At that point, I think probably, probably top level it actually looks like, sorry. I think Ms. Worts is looking through some, you know, some of the documents our insurance provider to make sure things are covered in that way. And I think once that gets streamlined and finalized, we can, you know, bring it to Council. And that's the right time to do it.
And Mary indicated she'll go back to me by tomorrow morning, so hopefully I'll have something soon.
Will part of the project, the part of the project be security clearance for people who are volunteering to help? The kind of vetting with the police department?
There'll be waivers, those kind of things that are to come. This is very, this is my first draft.
Yes, yes, yes. We are, we are, we want to make sure everybody can safely participate on both sides. Absolutely. But if anybody has, if anybody has any comments, anybody has any questions or concerns, go ahead and email me, it's not a problem.
Very catchy name.
We're still working on it, it'll be revealed once it comes up.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, exciting.
Yeah, I have one. I want to remind everyone that next, a week from today, September eleventh, which is Patriot Day, John Delano, a prominent political reporter for KDKA, is going to come to Whitehall Borough, this is sponsored by the Whitehall Borough Historical Society, and talk about Pennsylvania's role in the upcoming election. This is a huge, you know, very important election coming up. And the fact that we have such a prominent speaker to come and talk to us, I think behooves all of us, if we're available, to go to this, you know, attendance. And you have to register, I believe, through the Historical Society? Library. Library, too. Either one. Either one. So through, you can register through the Whitehall Public Library or you can register through the Whitehall Borough Historical Society. But it's, you know, it's very important that you register. And it's very important that we, you know, have a great crowd there that shows that we are, you know, civic-minded and we're trying to get, you know, great information before, you know, the upcoming election. So please, if you're available next week, come to that presentation. Two nights ago, there were sixty two seats left. Is that right? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up, because he's fantastic.
Yeah.
He's entertaining besides being so informational and he really engages the audience. He's wonderful.
He is, he's really good. And I think part of it, Eric, may be that we switched the date so many times. You know, people may ask. So, so that's why I'm making sure that I'm bringing it up now. But, you know, talk to your friends, don't just sign up yourself. But talk to the people in your neighborhood, because this is a very prestigious event for Whitehall Borough to have. John just doesn't do this for, you know, for anyone. And so he's, he's doing it for us, and I think we should honor him by filling that room.
Very good, yes. And if there's no other new business, I want to turn over the German to Mr. Beeth.
Yeah, I'd like to, lost a close friend this week. I think a lot of you people know who he is. Memory of a gentleman who coached and taught at Baldwin High School for forty nine years. His name was Ed Helbig. And just, just a quality guy. I mean, if anybody knows anything about track and field up in Baldwin and the Baldwin Invitational, it is one of the most prestigious meets in Western Pennsylvania, might be all Pennsylvania. And I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with Ed. And he suffered for a year and a half, so in a way, it might have been a blessing, but it's very hard to accept what a quality guy for those people know. And I think maybe, something, it looked like you were young enough, maybe, yeah, a bit classed, so. Maybe, but I'd like to close this meeting in his memory.
Thank you, Bill. We'll adjourn our meeting. What?
Second, I'll second that.
Motion made a second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimously in honor of Mr. Ed Helbig. Please, twenty p.m. Thank you, everybody.